Okay. My clock shows it's already six oh one, so let's go ahead and get started. Today is Wednesday, September twenty fourth, it is six o'clock PM. And we will bring our planning commission meeting to order. Before we do, I'd like to welcome John Lyons to the commission and he's going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. We'll go ahead and move to our roll call, starting at my left.
John Lyons, no conflicts.
Joel Temple, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Barbara De Soto, no conflicts.
Matt Wheelwright, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. If we begin our meeting, I'll read a statement on decorum. For the public here, although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions. Unless otherwise invited by the chair, please wait to speak until called on. When speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence at the beginning of your comment. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not, please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive during the hearing. Okay, so with that taken care of, we'll go ahead and move to item one, Provo City Council requests an ordinance text amendment. To Provo City Code fourteen dot oh six dot oh twenty to clarify the owner occupant definition. And. Thank you. Please state your name and then you may start presenting.
David Pyle, policy analyst. Evening commissioners, the amendment that we have in front of you is pretty straightforward. You may remember from a previous meeting, an application for an ordinance text amendment. Regarding an ADU on Bannock Drive. Staff originally recommended denial for that application based on owner occupancy requirements. This commission then recommended approval based on a. Different interpretation of the city code, particularly fourteen oh six oh twenty D two. After which council staff wiki consulted with the legal department and the official interpretation that was given was that this clause. Conflicts with the clauses around it. Is very unclear if not in word definitely intent. And so the recommendation that was given was to simply remove that clause as the. Cleanest way to avoid future confusion on this issue. Which is the proposal that's in front of you right now. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Yeah, Lisa?
I just had a question about the second to last paragraph. It seemed kind of confusing to me. It didn't seem like it related to A, B, and C that it was referring to, but maybe I'm just not an expert at legalese. So I don't know if that's just like make sure that it relates and is. Worded properly and we don't need to talk further about it, but that was confusing to me.
All I can say is that it's been reviewed by the legal department and it's been approved.
It refers, it refers back appropriately. Okay.
Where are you looking?
Any person, the last one on the screen. Cause it kind of, it feels like it's saying. You don't have to submit documentation because of these things and then it feels like it's saying, and if you don't submit it, then. Uh, you can show this doc, I don't, I don't know, it was, it felt like it was asking for something that it just got done saying you didn't need to have. So I would, wasn't sure if that was a mistake or not.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
So.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So in the case of the application that we, we heard a couple of weeks ago. That would not be possible with this new rewrite.
Again, referring back to what was said by legal, their interpretation is that it never would have been to begin with. So it wouldn't matter in this instance.
Cause it seems like now if someone has co-ownership with someone who lives out of state. A parent on the title, right? In this instance. This would no longer be possible with, with this section of code removed. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well.
And how maybe should have been interpreted as well, but also how this section removed means you all have to be living in the home.
That's correct, yes.
Thanks.
I, I have a question on that too. Can you go to where it has part A? Is there a way to flip back in the code here? Yeah. Yeah, did the previous slide show it? Did not. Okay. Section A, owner occupant means except as set forth in section D of this definition, an individual who. Yeah, I think she's just trying to pull it up for the public. Yeah.
Yes.
It's under definitions.
It is under owner.
Yeah, there we are. Okay. Possessed as shown by a recorded deed fifty percent or more ownership in a dwelling unit and occupies the dwelling unit with a bona fide intent to make it his or her primary residency. So I'm thinking, looking at this and I'm thinking like the parent situation, if the parent only owns, say twenty percent of it. Do they need to live there or not? That's what I'm confused by because they don't have fifty percent. So does that make it so they don't have to live there? Or does that, you know what I mean? Like I'm, I'm confused about the wording there.
Well, again, I'm not a legal expert. My understanding would be that fifty percent is the threshold. So that if it's less than that, they would not need to live there. That's.
So.
My non-expert understanding.
That thought, what if, what if, you know, I buy a house with my son, I put my wife on the title as well. So now we each own thirty-three percent and nobody owns fifty percent.
Hi, Scott, the zoning administrator. I just want to help clarify here.
This would be great.
Yeah, so if you look further down in the definition under subsection D. It does say that a person who meets the requirements of subsection A, B, or C of this definition. May not be deemed an owner occupant if the property on which the dwelling is located. Has more than one owner and all owners of the property do not occupy the dwelling unit. With a bona fide intent to make it their primary residence. So that clause there is what requires every owner, anyone who has any percentage. Has to live there. What the fifty percent goes to is. Technically, if there were three property owners and there wasn't any. Documentation to show what percentage each one owned. The assumption is that each owns a third and so none of them would own at least fifty percent and then none of them would technically be considered an owner occupant. That doesn't come into play very often when we have an instance where. They're actually all living there. It's usually that. If there's multiple owners, one of them typically is living somewhere else.
So under the situation we talked about where maybe a parent helps, but they only claim they own twenty percent of it, et cetera. If the child lives there, would they meet this definition or not?
They would not because all, because of that subsection D requires.
Then what is the purpose of A?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
There's never a situation where A comes into play.
A should have been amended when D was adopted.
Correct.
Whoever did this didn't, wasn't careful. We need to fix that.
So, because when I look at A, I think that the situation we heard still could happen because they were fifty fifty.
And especially since it comes first, it makes it very, very confusing.
Well, but it does say and. So it says fifty, fifty percent or more ownership and occupies the dwelling unit with a bona fide intention to make it their primary.
Correct. So the situation I'm talking about is let's say the child owns seventy-five percent, the parent owns twenty-five percent. The child is the one over fifty percent and living in the residence. So they are the owner occupant.
No, it says you have to, you have to. Well, yes, except that you can't have anybody else that's the owner occupant. You can't. It doesn't seem confusing to me. I feel like it's what it's saying is you have to live there.
Right, but if you look at D, it's saying. That situation actually isn't valid and you have to do D instead. So it's saying. You can't live there. You, you can't. You're not an owner occupant unless you live there.
The key is you're right. For owner occupant, A seems clear. You have to own fifty percent and live there, but I'm talking about how in the code. We're essentially saying this would not qualify for an ADU. Even though under A, some might say, hey, I meet A and because they don't meet D, they're contradictory.
Okay, well, I feel like because A is the first thing listed here and B is also dependent on A. That maybe we should say, can somebody rewrite this so we can read it before it goes on? Or do we just say? We trust you.
Please send this on and we will come back later with further corrections.
Okay, so that's your, that's the recommended.
Yes.
Path.
So my only other question is just to clarify. So. The intent of the city here. Is to say that the situation like what we saw. With a minor owner parent who does not live there, we don't want those to be eligible for ADUs. Is that correct?
Historically, that's been the case of our interpretation of the code and how. Legals interpreted it and advised us and from the councils conversations, it's been clear that their intent is that. All owners of the property live at the property.
So what happens when this is already an application that's got its foot in the door and we've said, yeah, we like this. And then someone comes back and says, actually, then we don't think that's what the code means. Where do they fall in this?
Meaning a.
Do they still have the right to ask for what they're asking or does their application automatically get kicked out because of their ownership status?
So if they're, if you're talking about. The application for an ADU text amendment. That's separate from this. This only comes into play truly when somebody is applying. For their rental dwelling license to qualify for the rental dwelling license for their ADU, they would have to meet these requirements.
So they could get their zone change, but then they would have to change their ownership status before they could get their rental dwelling license.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, man.
So I think I'm understanding all of this, but I'm not sure this is, is this really what we want? I mean, we have a serious affordability problem. The state legislators pushed some things on us because of that. This seems like it. Doesn't help the situation. Like I'm thinking about my own kids, there's no chance they're going to afford their first home without me somehow helping them. So we're excluding a whole portion of the population in a market that's significantly troubled. Now I realize too that there's a hard way, there's very difficult to enforce. Right? We don't want. On paper, it looks like you're an owner who lives there, but you're not really like I under, I can appreciate that too, but I just want to. Voice that, that we're actually undermining part of the reason we're trying to allow more of this.
Yeah, I just want to chime in and say I agree. I, I was okay with the application we heard a couple of weeks ago and, and. To see that we're essentially blocking any future situations like that, that, that's not language that I personally am.
So Lisa just reminded me, this is a good conversation to have, but we should have public comments before we talk about this and limit our discussion right now to question. Yeah, this is the applicant right here. So any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, no, I guess it's not a question. Nevermind.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Are there any neighborhood or district chairs here tonight to speak on this item? Okay, so we'll open it up to the general comment. Each person may make one comment. If we have questions, we'll ask them at the end of public comment. This time is for comments only. If you have questions about an item, please speak to staff privately. So I invite you forward now. Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Rhoda Goff and I'm with the District One. I live in Indian Hills. And I was at the hearing last night. We were not successful, by the way, with the ADU application. But the council expressed some of the same concerns that Commissioner Wheeler just mentioned that. What do you do when you have a parent who's trying to help people out? Now, when I bought my home, it was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Houses now in my neighborhood are a million. So you have a very solid middle-class neighborhood with. All of a sudden, these very high-end priced homes. People who want to buy into the neighborhood, who grew up in the neighborhood, they're looking at their parents to help them finance homes. And so it's very difficult if your credit rating is, you know, you need your parents' credit rating, you need help with the down payment, you need a guarantee. To be able to qualify for the dwelling as a primary resident, even though that's actually what you're functioning as and your parent is just. Living someplace else in their own home. We recently had a family move, well, they're not physically in, but they're building in the neighborhood. And they bought several lots so that they could build houses for their kids. So it's going to be a real issue for people if they need to at any time apply for something that's going to give them that kind of. Residency. The other issue is, one of my friends was with me at the hearing last night, her husband left her, just packed up and left. She has. Twelve kids. She lives in that house and right now she would not meet owner occupancy. And if the divorce goes through and she's still caught on top of, you know, a mortgage with her husband. Then how does she ever prove that she's the resident and yet she bought the house with the intention of being there with her husband the whole time? I think there are issues if you're really thinking about who you're trying to.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. What are our thoughts?
I agree with Commissioner Wheeler. I, I think that. I understand, yeah, I understand trying not to have sham transactions and all that, but I also do think that this is essentially like a. Like an income minimum. It's keeping. It functions in a way that could be. Seen as like discriminatory and I think that's kind of bad. Because again, like if you're talking about people who otherwise can't afford it or just because of the interest rate, but they could otherwise afford it, you know? And you're basically. Making it so that certain people don't get to live in certain neighborhoods. And. I don't agree with that.
Thanks. Other comments?
I just feel like I would like the language cleaned up before I. Feel comfortable with this because right now one part of it says one thing, one part says another and. I agree that. I don't, this is not what my objective is for this. For ADUs, so for owner occupancy. And I don't know what the right solution is to protect. That process. So people aren't trying to circumvent the system, but. Doesn't seem like it helps either. I think we're going to run into some problems with it. I guess my, my thought would be to forward it to the municipal council, but not recommend it. And then they can do whatever they want with that. That's what my vote might be.
Other thoughts?
Could, could we add like language that we are wanting to see or? I don't know, some kind of condition of something we'd like to see incorporated?
Yeah, we can make any suggestions we want or state our concerns that we've had about the wording as it stands. Do both of those.
So. I believe this is just cleaning up the language and so the intent has always been there. For people to own the home and occupy the home. Not for a parent who doesn't live there to own the home, funnel all their kids through it until they're done with it. What happens is you chop up these homes by putting ADUs in there. You make a target for investors. The price of these homes goes up and then you guarantee families cannot afford them. This has happened in our neighborhood. And I've said it before, my family home went for eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's thirty-two hundred, thirty-one hundred square feet. But the reason is because we have so many ADUs in the neighborhood that the price of these homes goes up. And most of the ADUs in our neighborhood are not owner occupied. We have a lot that are breaking the law. And it's, it's just not fair, not right, not good.
So you're, you like the intent of this?
Absolutely.
Then the language needs to be fixed, so it's not. Contradictory, but.
Otherwise you, you put a real target for investors to come. We, we're a different community because of the universities. And so people outside of the state have a real interest in buying property here. And in using it as an investment or to put their children through school and or whatever. And I just think that that's not our intention. We have to be able to. Rely on owner occupancy for these ADUs. There's a huge difference between an ADU where the owner is the occupant versus when they are not. Huge difference. I can tell you that because we live with it and it's not the people who live there. It's not the renters. We love the renters. They're great. But they don't take care of the property in the same way. They don't, it's just not the same. And if, if it's hard to recognize that, drive around my neighborhood and you can see it.
I don't think we're saying we want it to not be owner occupied, but I think it's this. That there's no niche carved out for some of these cases that I think are good. They are the owners.
They're, they're not the owners if they're not here, right? That's what owner occupancy is.
But, okay, so like this young lady who bought this house. She is not the owner. Because her dad is also an owner. Is what you're saying. So their ownership counts for nothing.
Right.
Because her dad had to help her.
Right. I mean, I'm, I love that her dad could help her, but he's going to have to find another way to do it. Because the, the chance of having a sham transaction is so high. When you, when you allow this. It's, and the city has a really hard time stopping this. Am I right?
No, that's correct. It was because of the sham transactions that this was made as draconian as it is.
And, and I mean, there are properties in my neighborhood that I have reported over and over and over and the city cannot shut them down. Because the tenants are not truthful about what's happening there. And the owner is not truthful about what's happening there. We all know what's happening, but the shitty, the city. Sorry about that.
Watch your mouth.
It wasn't a Freudian slip, anybody.
The city can't shut them down.
I have a question.
Reflect that in the official record.
I have a question. There's on page five of the staff report, so it's D, section D here that's at the bottom of this page. It says a person who meets the requirements. May not be deemed an owner occupant if. There's more than one owner. And then it says you can submit documentation to contest that would. What does it mean to be a primary borrower on the, on the loan? Does that mean there can be two people that are signed and you're one of them? Or does it mean you have to be more than fifty percent? Or? How does that go? I'm just looking at these exceptions that our community members shared with us about. For example, somebody who's in the process of a divorce, who clearly lives there with their family, but how does that? Get treated by this language?
Very good question. I'm, I'm not an expert in. Loan documentation. We simply go. And I, I'll be honest, I don't think there's been an instance where we've. Specifically gone through this list with any applicant who's been concerned about any of these issues. who's been concerned about any of these issues. Typically, the documentation we end up looking at is those listed in a different definition of primary residence. That's where oftentimes we um we're able to verify whether or not they meet the primary residence definition to be able to be able to even be considered an owner-occupant. Um so if, you know, if their list is a primary borrower on documents for any loan, you know, I'm assuming that the loan application or the loan documentation will will show who the primary borrower is and who any subsequent borrowers borrowers are listed.
So maybe not work well in their favor. But once again, our goal is not to give them secondary income from their property. It's to look, give them a a place to live and secondary goal is to help out.
That's right. So um my understanding is divorce is a different issue. Because when two people get divorced, if they've had a loan together, then in the divorce decree, that's that becomes, each of them gets a certain percentage of the house. Daniel, you can correct this.
Oh, it's whatever two people come to agreement on.
Whatever they agree upon.
Which could be any number of things.
Say they each get half of it, then the one has to buy the other out of it, which means you get a new loan.
Yeah, but if you're in the middle of that, then where do you, I guess you just can't make any moves on your property.
That that's just divorce. That's not, that doesn't have any bearing on this.
I'll say you find a lot of couples sometimes will be separated and stay married and living apart just to because they can't resolve resolve this.
So I think I I mean, I'm looking at this and I, every ADU issue seems to be complicated, right? Every single one. And I see multiple sides. One is I'm really not opposed to parents helping their kids buy houses. I think it's more and more necessary, right? Um having grown up in the Silicon Valley, I saw it happen there too, where just to get into a home, you had to have parental support because to out-compete everybody else, it wasn't even the price. It was more about having enough upfront that you could pay to get the person to take your deal over somebody else. I do think there's some confusing things here, but I could also come back to the fact that the edit that we're being asked to comment on and recommend on is limited to this one part down here. And it does clean it up a bit by removing that part, right? That was a part we struggled with. It was a part we could see read multiple ways. So that part looks okay, but I think there's still some issues here that we really need to think through on ADUs and what kind of situations we're trying to avoid or promote, those kinds of things.
So so that having been said, we should do what staff is recommending and forward the recommendation. Positive recommendation and then fix the other stuff later.
Yes, and well, and then I would amend to that recommendation, a recommendation that further edits be made to this code to clarify other parts of it, right?
I could do that.
I I don't want to recommend approval of this deletion of subpart two. I I agree with some of the concerns uh Commissioner Kendall made with the ADUs increasing prices, resell prices, like there's that that is a thing, no doubt. It's also hard to say like to what degree it is, I think. Uh so I'm gonna push back on that because um housing prices, whether you have an AD or not, have gone up insanely. Yeah. And that's the only thing. And so so yeah, I share the same concerns uh Commissioner Wheelwright shared.
I mean, for me, that's a whole separate issue, right? Yes, it actually increases demand because now more people feel like they can buy it and then prices go up to compensate. And there's all these kinds of issues, but I it's the edit right here that I think we should focus on.
Well, it it, yeah, so the edit is like, do you recommend approving the deletion of subpart two? And my response is no, I don't recommend deletion of that.
Do you think it should be reworked or what? You just think it should be left? What's?
I think it should be left. The only other comment I, the only other comment I had for for subparts one is D, um subparts one or I, and subparts two I's, I would say uh each of those should say provide or as indicated by each of the following documents. I would put that in there. Um and the second one on subpart, yeah, I I um shall provide documentation of each of the following. Just so it's uh you can't have four out of the five or two out of the three. You need to have each one, if that's the intent, just for sake of clarity. I'd make that replicant, make that recommendation.
Any other thoughts?
Yes, I have a few thoughts, if that's all right. Um I agree with your original comments that um um I guess clause lowercase a is confusing and should be eliminated. My second thought is if our concern is that uh uh you have to to be an owner-occupant, any and all occupancy, any and all owners need to occupy it, I would just say that very clearly upfront. Make it real simple statements so that there's no ambiguity, no confusion about it. And then the 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 um statement about in D clause I and clause II, if I'm not sure clause II adds anything to to the situation. In that case, I'm in favor of deleting it. I don't see it adds anything, but I would not want to approve this until till the wording is clean. So even somebody like I could understand it on the first or second reading and it not have to hire an attorney to get an interpretation and have debates that the committee can't figure it out. Regarding if this is a good idea or not a good idea, that's a whole different discussion in terms of do we um do we agree with that to be an owner-occupant? All owners need to be owner-occupants to be to clown as an owner-occupant location. It sounds, I get a little confused between a person being an owner-occupant and a uh home have all owner occupants available. That uh certainly by clause A, an individual who possesses fifty percent or more ownership and lives there is an owner-occupant. That's simple, I understand that. If there's more, if it has multiple, but more than fifty percent, it implies that there's more than one. So I would just be real simple and clear.
I agree.
So I I'm seeing kind of two types of mo- um motions we can make. One would be recommend approval, but we also think other changes should be done, or we could recommend denial. Or, yeah, I guess denial is what you'd call it. Saying that it still needs to be cleaned up, right? So.
And either one of those would still go to the city council and they would do with it what they want.
Right, it's just a recommendation.
I guess the differences that are a recommendation for denial might send the message that we don't like the the red area being removed. So that that's what it comes down to is what you said, not about whether we think owner occupancy is good or not, but.
Can we continue it and push it back till it gets till it gets reworded? Is that a possibility?
Yeah. If someone moves for that, yeah.
I would prefer that you voted up or voted down. City council's asked us to move forward, so it's coming from the council office.
Knowing that the city council can disregard anything we say and we're just making a recommendation, continuing doesn't really benefit us. Um so we just need to decide whether we want to send a positive or negative message and then suggest changes either way.
And and I don't think we're being asked to just to make a recommendation to change the owner occupancy requirement. It's just to clean up the language of this so that it makes it more clear. So I like that statement, John, that you mentioned, to just make it very clear from the outset that all owners need to be, need to occupy the premises.
And if it's not as cut and dry as section A that we're being told by city staff shouldn't be there is, then they need to find a way to express that right up front in a clear and concise way.
I would suggest, how would we feel about recommending denial and saying that the rewrite should take the entire section into account and really think about what we want to define it as? Instead of just focusing on this one thing that caused confusion last time.
Yeah, I also think they could add something that says owner, an owner-occupied dwelling or property means like that statement you said, all any and all owners live there. And then the owner-occupant means, does that make sense? Like, so we're defining the two things because it is like, um that just makes it super, super watertight.
I could go for that. I I feel comfortable with saying we're denying it because we feel like it needs to be bigger than just these cross-hatched areas.
Yeah, and I I really do think that this is something that it should be made really clear and it should be easy for people to understand, ordinary people like um Commissioner Lyons said. Um it's doing nobody any favors to make it obscure. And so I definitely think they should take the time to make it well-done, basically.
Um Commissioner Wheelwright, I'm really curious if you have any thoughts. You were the one with the the interpretation we kind of gravitated towards last time, so I'm really curious your thoughts on it.
Uh so my thought still is that these, this is gonna happen more and deserves to happen more where parents helping a child. I understand that there are some challenges along the way, but I think that's the, that's, I think that ought to be the goal. But I but I agree, we should do whatever's best to clean up this language and whatever.
So I think, what if we did this? Because I I I think most of us agree with that. Um what if our motion was something along the lines of we recommend denial until the entire thing is taken into account and made clear, not just this one section? Um and that the city council really consider situations about parents helping children and how to handle those in this situation.
How how about you recommend denial with the preference that a more broad um amendment take place?
Okay.
Does recommending denial mean it has to come back to us or they can still hear it and make those changes? Okay.
Hey, can I just say also that I think the discussion we had about conditional use is also important in this because I, having said all of that, I agree, it's nice to have parents being able to help their children, right? And that that's probably gonna come up more and more, but this isn't the way to do it. Like, it's so hard to enforce. But if you had a conditional permit, then you, if it if they weren't meeting the requirement, then it's over. You can't have that ADU anymore.
This is one of the points I made about the way the city council handled this because essentially because they wanted to be able to see what's going on with all these ADUs, which makes sense because they get a lot of flowback from that. They made it the text ordinance amendment, and that means that it runs with the land i- is not conditional use. So basically, we're trading like more oversight, short-term, for long-term ability to have oversight, which I think is a mistake.
I but I would add too, every city in the country is dealing with this. People have figured this out or or some version that works for them. I'm not positive conditional use is the answer. I'm clear that it's not currently as written because we're all confused and we spend a lot, so much time talking about it. But there is an answer out there. City council can give guidance, the staff's awesome, so they can help figure this out. Other cities are figuring this out. We just need some time and we need to be flexible to figure out what's the right answer for Provo's way of approaching this. But I'm not positive it's conditional use. I know that this is confusing, so whatever we send up, yes, clean it up. That's the right next step. Okay, any more comments, discussion? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Oh, want me to take a stab at the motion?
Sure.
Okay, so uh I move that we deny item number one, Provo City Council requests an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code fourteen point zero six point zero two zero to clarify the owner-occupant definition with the recommendation that there's a broader approach that needs to be amended and and corrected in the language of the code.
So just real quick, we're gonna recommend denial.
We're gonna recommend denial.
Yeah.
Of this item with that recommendation that the, there's a broader amendment that needs to take place.
Great.
Would it be useful to say a broader rewrite or do we want to say broader amendment? Does it send the same understanding?
Broader amendment or rewrite.
Those, yeah, those sound semantic to me, but do we have a second for the motion? Oh, second. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Should we be clear that part of the rewrite should be explicit about what an owner-occupant is and what an owner-occupied property is? And explicitly say that any and all owners that live in the, any and all owners need to live in the property for it to be an owner-occupied property?
If that's their goal, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that is part of my motion because I don't know that that's the answer. We need them to look at the broader and there's some stuff to figure out.
I I fear if we just leave it wide open, they won't understand what we're talking about.
They have our transcripts.
Yeah. Several of them watch the meetings too. Okay.
Well, well, I I I think if anyone does want to make comments on their motion, like now is the time. Right?
I just want the whole thing rewritten so that it it's not confusing.
Yeah, I, the only part of what John said that I hesitate a little bit is that they should explicitly say that everybody has to live there because I don't know if that's the answer. But they need to decide what that answer is and then make that really clear, right?
Yes.
That's my understanding of uh uh fourteen oh six oh twenty D.
It is, as currently, we're just not sure if that should be the answer, right?
I I guess for me, it comes back to that's not what we're being asked to do, though. So I I would imagine they need this right away so that they can deal with the things that are coming to them. So my is, my suggestion is, I'm I mean, I'll vote no to the the motion because I think we do need to clean this up so they can use it immediately. The other things we're talking about are a different new level. And they need some cleanup right now.
But the motion actually says clean it up, just clean it all up. Like, it doesn't say change definitions or anything. It just says because A and D conflict with each other, we were saying it all needs to be rewritten, not just cross-hatched.
You've heard two different things, though. You've heard, you've heard someone say, just clean it up so it's very clear. And you've heard two other people say, no, I don't know that that's the right answer. I think it needs to be tackled differently.
I I was under the impression that was what the motion was, was just to rewrite it so that it's all flows and makes sense.
I do think Commissioner Kendall brings up a good difference, though. I mean.
To not slow it down.
There is this, then the larger picture, right? And you could view those as separate issues, right? And say, we recommend you make this change, but just so you know, this isn't the end, right? It's not perfect.
But they they can do that independent of which way we recommend our vote.
And and part of my reason for being very explicit is to make it really clear to so if they know that's exactly what they want or not. Make it real simple.
I was, I I think it was um Commissioner Jensen said, like, we're saying denial, the idea of such recommending denial was to say, we really do think there's a bigger problem with this, just to like newsflash, you know? And I agree with that method of doing that because they can go ahead and do the, they have the power to do this, we're just recommending. Um and using the recommendation and negative to just get their attention on how bad this and confusing it can be as a whole.
Which is an instruction we received from the city council is if you have concerns with how it is, that you should recommend denial with and then state what you want fixed about it because we are recommending and they have a chance to fix those things in the forwards.
They can, they can uh approve this as is and then go back and do another.
Another round.
Another round because they will see how confused we are.
But they can also not approve it as is, rewrite it and approve it and still be on the same timeline. Like, staff can work on it between now and when they hear it and they can have those suggestions for them then.
No, because if they do a broader rewrite, those other changes would have to come back to you.
Okay.
So I expect they'll do two rounds because of that, but that's up to them.
Okay.
Okay, so as the motion stands, are we ready to vote on it? Any other concerns on the motion? Okay, so let's start voting.
Did you restate the motion so we're completely clear?
I wrote it down, I can restate it if you like.
That'd be great.
To deny the, to deny with the recommendation that a that broader amendments take place.
Okay, we ready or you have?
To recommend denial.
Yeah, recommend.
The recommendation that broader amendments take place.
Okay, so we'll start the voting uh with Commissioner Lyons.
Aye.
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 Aye, nay, aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so it passes seven to one. Hey, these are always hard, they're always fun to try to wrestle with and try to figure out. Let's go ahead to item two. The Airport Services Department requests project plan approval for a new two-story addition to the Provo Airport Terminal in the Airport A Zone located at thirteen thirty-one South Skyway. And Aaron Ardmore will be presenting that for us.
All right, so I I will be brief because we have airport expert in the back of the room. I can answer all your questions. This is the, uh, phase two of the, uh, multi-phase expansion of our airport. Um, so, so all of you know, the airport's been very successful. Um, needs to grow, uh, and this is, this is the first step of that. So you could see in that illustration on the, the left of the screen. The little green section, uh, that's what we're talking about tonight. Uh, the blue and the purple are our future phases that would be coming back to you. Uh, at a later date. So I've highlighted that green section on the aerial, uh, kind of the scope of that in the red. On the image on the right, uh, to, to give you an idea of what that expansion, uh, would look like. Uh, then we've got the floor plans here, so you can see, um, as. Detailed in the staff report, uh, the first floor is really just an expansion of ticketing and baggage. Um, though there are some additional uses through that, that phase two expansion, there's some future concession stands, kitchen. Um, and, and things like that. And then the second floor of this phase, uh, is to be. Uh, future tenant lease space, uh, some of that to the TSA specifically, uh, some of that is open-ended. Uh, so this would be expanding the airport's building and also expanding its gates. Uh, so hoping the airport to grow and to provide more flights, uh, at a, a more regular basis. Uh, this is the flight elevation and the renderings of what that would look like with this addition. Uh, so you've got the current airport terminal and then the, the phase two addition there on the, on the, uh, north side of it. Um, that is all I have. This has gone through CRC staff review, uh, has been found to meet all the, the zone and requirements and. Uh, technical standards for engineering, uh, power and all that. Um, so we come to you recommending approval. Uh, any questions for me before I turn it over to Jared if there's anything else?
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for staff?
Was there an environmental report done at some point in the past as part of this initial? Right, there's a, there's a bigger phased document that this is now a small part of. But there are environmental impacts to all of this stuff. So saying we need to grow the airport is really saying. We want more flights, not it's good for everybody, or it's good for the lake, or it's good for the neighbors or something like that. I just want to understand a little bit more of the impact. That this represents overall.
I'm Jared Penrod with the, uh, airport services department. Um, there has been a larger environmental study done. It happens with our master plan process. So the, the terminal was identified in that previous master plan process. Um, and, uh, we have looked at environmental impacts for the terminal area. So Aaron had showed, uh, a previous, yeah, that whole site. So we looked at the whole site, um, previously.
And nothing's changed to necessitate more studies, we're still falling within.
Correct.
What was committed.
Correct. We're, we're still showing the same amount of gates, the same amount of overall impact to the area for that.
So I have a few questions. Why does Provo need to grow the airport? Can Dave please have a kit for a minute?
Right now we, uh, are at capacity with our current number of gates. So they are, um, completely utilized every morning. Um, also we have, uh. Uh, the, the area that we're focusing on right now is a choke point for the operation. Um, specifically our outbound baggage. So, um, in the, in one of the slides, it showed all the baggage handling system. Um, so that's a major choke point for us. Um, so this project. Helps alleviate that. The other, the other big choke point is the actual ticketing counters themselves. Right now we have five counters with ten positions. Um, this project significantly increases that to. Uh, approximately twenty-four positions and it allows for additional queuing space. So it's a lot. It will allow for a lot more, um. Or, or a lot easier flow through the terminal and through the, through your trip. But right now the, the, uh, the demand for, um, gate space is driving the growth.
How many additional, uh, flights, Dave, do you anticipate with this?
With this phase specifically, um, it's kind of a preparatory phase for those additional gates. So this phase won't necessarily allow for more flights, but it, um. Sets this, the, uh, all of the backend systems, that baggage handling, the ticketing for the next phases, which, uh. This commission will see likely in two to three months, that next phase plans. Um, so the next phase that you'll see that phase three A, the, the blue portion on the north side. Um, that adds three gates to our existing four gates. Um, so potentially, you know, forty-ish percent increase in operations is possible. Um, that said, uh, it is dependent on airlines and what they want to do, what flights they want to add and, and that. Which we don't have control over what.
Do you have indication that there might be some of that though? That there might be additional flights coming in?
We feel that there will be, um, specifically, uh, our gates are fully loaded in the mornings and the evenings. That's the main push. Um, for the airlines. So we feel that opening up additional gate space will bring in more, um, more flights.
So what is the benefit to Provo of more gate space and more flights?
More opportunity for, um, for people in the county to, um, travel to, uh.
Understand that, but is there any direct benefit that comes to the city of Provo when this happens?
Are you talking about like direct revenues or?
Something like this, just don't know. So the revenue perhaps that come in, any additional.
The.
In additional costs, let's say we'll take on with additional traffic and additional noise and potential pollution and things.
Would you get, would you get additional revenue? Um, that revenue stays at the airport to satisfy our grant assurances with the FAA. Um, it gives us more funding for personnel, for future projects, all those types of things.
I think, I think there's a bigger picture here too. Uh, I think the more people are using the airport, the more people are stopping at our gas stations, at our restaurants, at our hotels. I think there's, there's kind of this, this ripple effect, uh, that, that comes into play.
It starts with South County, you might get some of that. I don't know how much will come directly to Provo for that. Just curious, I'm just wondering.
Commissioner, for example, we have five acres of commercial development at the south end of the sports park. We're trying to develop right now. We feel like the expansion of the airport and the sports park itself will be two of the drivers for our hotel on that property.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there an expansion of parking with this?
Yes, uh, so all of those orange areas are expansion of parking. Um, and those, you, you'll see additional projects come through, uh, this commission to detail those. Um, but yeah, there's a significant expansion to the parking lot.
Uh, is there also better integration with the public transportation system?
Yeah, so, um, we will continue to provide bus services to the, the area. Um, the, the bus stop we have now will accommodate a UVX style bus. Um, and we've been working with UTA to, um. To see when our time is right for that type of service. As it stands now, we do have, we do have a bus stop. We. Uh, fully plan to keep that in the, uh, in the expansion plans and to continue to provide, uh, opportunity for UVX style buses. Uh, to come there.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, right now it's almost easier to take the UVX and front runner to Salt Lake Airport. And yeah, so I'd, I'd love to see easier ways to get out to the Provo Airport.
You, uh, UTA did just implement, um, their, um, I forget the name. Yeah, their, their ride share type service there.
Oh, okay, like the on-demand?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, in an effort to, uh, provide easier access to the airport.
Lisa?
Um, is there a new gate as part of this phase or is that coming in phase three?
That will come in phase three.
So this is just the baggage processing area?
Yeah, we, we are building the shell space, um, that will occupy at that second floor. Um, will be a location for a new gate. Uh, but with this phase, it is primarily just that baggage handling system. The additional ticket counters and then the shelves that encompasses that area.
So how much of the curb facade on, um, the elevations, how much of that is new and how much of it is the existing? On that second picture there? Can you show us where the new stuff is or is it all new?
So, oh, here, so kind of right in here.
Do the second picture because it shows the front, right?
Sorry, you talking? Uh, this picture here? So it is.
On the left side, the east elevation, that's where the cars pull up to the curb. Is that all new?
This, it's new from right here over to the right.
So like the second column, the first column over?
So right at the bottom of that, the, in the, uh, in the top of the roof line.
And then my, I have a question about, a couple of questions about parking. Um, the orange areas that are shown, the one in the middle is not paved yet, but it's already being used as a parking lot. So can you tell us each of those, um, the rental car area, the long-term areas? Even the parking weight and the employee parking are going to be bumped over, it looks like. So when is that going to happen? Is that right away or is that? Right after?
Likely the fir-, it'll, it'll happen concurrently. Um, so likely the first. Um, car lot that you'll see is this rental car, um, being paved. And then we'll move into the, the gravel section of the long-term lot. Um, that will likely be done in several phases to accommodate the cars that are there so we can shift. Um, the vehicles around and not disrupt, uh, the vehicles that are parked there. Um. It is likely that the utilities and all the underground work to accommodate that facility will start next year. Probably next spring, summer.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the parking because I've seen that that long-term parking in the middle there is. Often almost full. And if we're talking about eventually doubling the amount of gates. It's not doubling the amount of parking that we're providing, so.
E- exactly. And so we've also identified this area between Lakeview Parkway. Um, and euphra to be overflow lot that will be long-term. Um, when I say overflow, still paved, still completely finished, all that thing, all those types of things, but to accommodate the extra parking there.
Okay, I'm just not convinced it's going to be enough, but we can, I guess, cross that bridge when we get to it. My last question, um, is about the wetlands out there, which is kind of what I think Matt was asking. As the airport takes up more ground out there, how are the existing wetlands preserved and protected? Cause it seems like when it came through for the first, for the first phase that we approved. That, um, there was a, like that ditch in between the road and where the parking is that was. Kind of their wetland area that was being preserved and it feels like it's all disappeared with the. With the emergency need for that parking to be expanded. So. It's already been paved over what happened to the, that little canal that was supposedly part of the preservation.
I'm not sure about the, the preservation or what was presented previously to the commission. We did do an environ- environmental impact study and identified wetlands on the area. And, uh, the, the portion right through here is what you're talking about. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was a little closer to the road, but yeah, there were, there was like a drainage ditch there that had. Water running through it and birds and wetlands area.
Right, we, we, we did, um, an analysis, analysis on that and it was not identified as not a wetland. And we were, uh, we, we were told we could fill it in.
Okay. Am I remembering that wrong, Commissioner Gonzalez? Do you remember talking about it and they said, oh yeah, we're, we're protecting it?
Uh, I can't.
You can't speak to that.
Remember that, but I, I will say there are areas and geographies where, uh. Where you do have something that looks like a wetland.
And it's not.
And it's not by definition.
It can go across the street.
Utah D N R, right?
Right.
I don't.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to say that as part of this, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Barbie, did you have one? Good?
I, I have yet a few more questions if that's okay. Uh, we're talking about the benefit for Provo. Do you have a feel for the number of additional jobs that will come through this expansion?
I don't off the top of my head, no.
Okay, another question that I, I don't know where this plays, um. My crystal ball is not very good. Economy, I don't know what's going to happen. It's possible. I can envision scenarios where. Uh, airlines come and go, things change, where it turns out not to be needed, not to be successful, if it turns out to not bring additional travel through here. And we don't pay the cost of that, is the city of Provo on the hook for any of that and any of these costs?
No, no, th- this is, will be fully funded by, um, it, it's funded by a lot of sources. But city of Provo is not paying for, for this expansion.
Yeah, thank you. But in, anyway, so we're, we're in terms of utilities or any infrastructure or services or anything like that?
No, the, the airport, um, yeah, no.
It, uh, thank you.
Okay, last call for questions. Good? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open it for, uh, public comment. Do we have any neighborhood or district chairs present? Okay, so we'll go ahead and, uh, open it to general comment. Um, when your time, you'll have two minutes to speak. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. So with that in mind, we'll invite you forward at this time. Okay, not seeing any comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I like that this makes the existing facility, uh, more efficient and effective without. Adding, I mean, it sounds like it's not going to add more flights right now. It's just going to make what's there run better, so I'm comfortable with it.
Any other comments?
This is totally not what we're talking about, but I still think they should, somebody should put a tram from. The, um, from here to the mall, just putting that out there. I think that would be amazing. And it would also, could also serve as overflow parking, um, because there is so much parking at the mall, so just an idea.
Yeah, I really look forward to the UVX expansion out there. I hope that's sooner rather than later. I mean, I'll admit my comment is, you know, I could walk to this airport, um, the best way to fly, just drag my luggage down the street. And honestly, I know.
I've ridden my bike home from this airport.
Yeah.
So.
Um, and it's, it's a great airport to fly out of. I love doing it when I can. My problem is, is that all the flights are sold out weeks and weeks in advance. I don't plan that far in advance. Um. But on, on that note, I know there's some concerns about increased flights, but even living close, the way the runway is oriented and stuff, I don't. Hear the planes very often. In fact, often I can see them and still not hear them. Um, so I think, you know, expansion is a good thing. I think most of the benefits are kind of halo stuff, right? I know, uh, business people who are more interested in working in Utah County and in Provo specifically. Because they can now can get here from the Bay Area directly or from the LA area directly, that having to go to Salt Lake and then drive down and, and the time that that takes. Um, so I look forward to seeing the, the expansion.
My question's notwithstanding, I actually like the airport a lot as well. I, I have walked home for a flight from the airport, so.
Yeah, um, but I love your questions. I think those are.
And I, 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 I support Commissioner, uh, uh, Jensen's comments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say just as a comment, uh. As I recall, the, the city talked about funding and who's paying for it, I think, uh. Some of it was from MACOG, the Mountain Land Association of Governments. Um, some of it was state, some of it was Build Back Better under Biden. Um, and then of course there's like. My airport taxes, passenger taxes, all that stuff. So it's largely self-funded. Yeah.
Any other comments? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the airport services department request. Department's request for this project plan, um, for a new two-story addition to the Provo Airport Terminal in the airport zone located at thirteen thirty-one South Skyway.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. Okay, let's go to item three, our last item for the night. Um, Gardner and Associates requests annexation of approximately sixteen point six seven acres of land. Located at approximately forty-five oh five North Canyon Road. Um, and Jessica Dinicky will present that for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Um, yes, as mentioned, this is to annex in property to. A long foothill drive into the city that's currently unincorporated county land. Um, as you can see, this area is a part of a small island that exists when, within the city. It is in our annexation policy plan, area seven. Um, so this. Is meeting the state requirements. is meeting the state requirements for annexation being a part of the policy plan and also reducing an existing island within the city. It has gone to council for the initial resolution, so now we're just bringing it back for the ordinance. Unfortunately, the applicant could not be here this evening, but I I have been given permission to speak on his behalf for one statement. And that is the there is no current development plan for this area when annexed and currently the property owner's intended use is to keep the agricultural uses going forward. The property owners are aware that any change of use will require a rezone, which would be brought back to the Planning Commission and to City Council for approval. As it stands right now, the next steps for this annexation are to go to City Council and then to be certified with the state. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Questions?
Matt?
I assume the answer to this is negative since it's in the annexation plan, but can you confirm that our city utilities department, everybody's on board that this is a good idea specifically to support water, sewer, all of those things?
Yes, before coming to Planning Commission, this has been reviewed by our CRC Committee, which includes Public Works Fire Building. So our our Public Works team is satisfied that we have the infrastructure to support bringing this into the city.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lance?
I presume this will be one of those exceptions that this will come across zoned as agricultural.
This initially will come in as as our open space and preservation zone. It will continue its agricultural use that it has in the county. But our annexation policy is that anything that is annexed comes in as our our open space preservation zone.
Will they need to be rezoned to come to to be zoned as agricultural then?
They can. They can keep the continued use. It doesn't need to be like an immediate thing to to come in and resume.
They're kind of grandfathered in.
I thought we learned that if it was agricultural, it's actually written into the code to come in as agricultural in order to continue that use. Did I misunderstand that?
That option is in in the general plan in the same section that says it's supposed to come in as OSPR. Says that if it's used already as agriculture and the continued use is proposed as agriculture, it can be annexed as agriculture. I think that's what Mr. Bills is going to want.
So that's something that can just be addressed at the city council level, what they want to come in as.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jessica. Go ahead and open this item for public comment. You've heard the rules at this point. You may make one comment. You'll have two minutes to speak. Do we have any district chairs or neighborhood chairs? Okay, so we'll open it to the general public and invite you forward at this time. Please come forward. I do ask, when you start, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Yes, my name is Leon Moon. And I am a close neighbor to this, to the property that the Ivies or Johnsons sold. And currently, I guess it belongs to Gardner and Associates. I come here to get a better idea of what's going on. Did they are they able to put up a larger picture of this wire that came advised us of this meeting?
I think she's pulling it up for you right now. There you go.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering if I would assume that at some point they want to develop this as a residential area with private or other homes. Although what the lady is saying, they're going to continue with this agriculture, is that correct? I just wonder where the exit points to get to Canyon Road or the road that goes down the hill past the cemetery or the mortuary. I assume that splits the property in half, because I remember the Johnsons legally contesting when the city went through there and divided their property playing one portion on one side and one on the other side of the freeway. So where would they anticipate?
Yeah, thank you. This is a time for comments. If you have any questions about it, then staff can help you out and answer those questions for you. Okay, so I think Jessica can answer the questions that you're asking.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other comments from the public? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'm in light of that question and our conversation before our meeting about how annexation works, I think it's important for us to remember that we're just asking right now whether we are okay with this parcel of land coming into Provo and being serviced by Provo and paying taxes in Provo. And whatever happens next is not on the table. There aren't any requests for that.
Right, especially since, as she said, there is no project plan at the moment. So those questions will be answered later in the process.
So that having been said, I think it makes perfect sense for something that's completely surrounded by Provo and presently contributing to Provo as though it is part of Provo minus the tax base be included in the city of Provo, so I don't have a problem with it.
I think for me, especially relatively small islands, it's easy for that.
Yeah, I would echo that. It's in in the strategy for annexation, it's to avoid islands and peninsulas. This is the opposite. This is fixing what I would see as really potentially problematic. It hasn't been. They're great neighbors and all that, but this fix is something that deserves, I I think, to be part of Provo. It fits the mold of everything we want and need, and I echo that.
And anything else if we had concerns with would come to us at a later date with a request for something, and we would be able to address any problems we have.
Right.
As far as usage.
Maybe this is actually a question for staff. Do we know why the properties north didn't want to also annex at the same time? Seems like we've almost gotten rid of the island, but now we have a smaller island.
We we would love to see it all gone or annexed in, I guess not gone, but all brought into the city at the same time. I don't know the behind the scenes on who spoke to who and if if we have any updated information, these are just the people who signed the petition at this time.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would love to.
Awesome.
Okay, I move that we forward a positive recommendation to Municipal Council for item number three, Gardner and Associates requests annexation of approximately sixteen point six seven acres of land located at approximately forty-five oh five North Canyon Road in the North Tim View neighborhood. And as part of that motion, I would just state that that the owner or the applicant will need to state whether they want OSPR or agricultural zoning when they get annexed in.
Excellent. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start our voting.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so item three passes unanimously. That finishes our items for tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.